We'll call the city council, Dallas City Council meeting to order on Monday, October 20th at 7:00 PM and ask the city recorder to call the rule.
Council President Briggs.
Here.
Counsel Barry Antos.
Yeah.
Counsel Blaser.
Here.
Counsel Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counsel Holsapple.
Here.
Counsel Jantsch.
Here.
Counsel Schilling.
Here.
Counsel Shane.
Here.
Counsel Spivey.
Here.
It's like everyone's here, we have a quorum. Please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Brian, we have some introductions.
Do. I'll invite our Mike Pierce to come on up.
I'd like to introduce our newest employee in the Public Services Department, Brandon Rose. He has a new entry in Section 3, who will be handling inspections with like subdivisions, city projects, miscellaneous inspections. Welcome in.
Welcome, Brandon. Do you have any other introductions, Brian?
No.
All right, let's move on to public comment. For the record, please provide us with your name and whether or not you live within side the city limits. You have up to three minutes. It's your turn to talk and ours to listen. You're responsible for the content, even if it was written by someone else. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Do not direct your comments to individual counselors, staff, members, or the audience. Defamatory or libelous comments will not be accepted. It is expected that you will maintain decorum and respect for each other. A wide variety of viewers watch these proceedings, therefore, we would kindly ask that you refrain from the use of offensive language and name-calling. Distractions take attention from the speaker. The audience, city council members, and city staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time by being respectfully quiet. First person I have up is Mandy Strauss.
This is swing, yeah. My name is Mandy Strauss. I'm a citizen, resident of Dallas, Oregon. And today I have Joey again with me, he's six, and my daughters Grayson and Isabel, two of my other kiddos. I'm just coming in tonight because I wanted to touch base after two weeks ago, the meeting. We took a little family outing, just so that we were sure, we were aware of what we were speaking of. But there are currently eight playgrounds in Dallas for kids that have playground equipment on them. All of them, with the exception of the Rotary Park, has swing sets. So between the seven parks that have swings, seventeen are for children and/or adults that can swing on it. Six are bucket seats for toddlers or small children. And three are saucer swings for multiple children to use. One at Roger Jordan Park has an empty bay right now that's not being used. But, so, that's what we noticed on there for total, I guess, twenty-six swings or possible twenty-seven. On September 22nd, Ms. Ward shared that, over the course of her time managing the parks, has been brought to her attention that we need more play opportunities or equipment opportunities for children of a variety of disabilities that are challenged in different ways. This was stated that we needed more. We just need equipment, ability for children with all abilities. We don't need more, we just, we need it. So, it was stated in that meeting also that there was not a swing at John Bernard Park, but there is a swing, there's a tire swing going. My question is, why not do a porn place there, at the park, that we all believed that there was going to be an all-accessible park for children, for all abilities? Again, if we go back and read the motor page, if you speak with them, and what the grant was going for was for all-abilities equipment. Mr. Ladd, I'll just jump forward because I know I don't have a lot of time. I know you made sure, last meeting too, to state, making sure that Ms. Ward, that this met national standards for ADA equipment, but does it meet the standards for all abilities, for all children? Can Joey do anything at John Bernard Park? We went over and looked, the hobbit hole, Ms. Ward mentioned, can't go through in a wheelchair, but he can roll over it. I don't see how we can roll over it. It looks like it's going to be dirt, the curb goes around. Traditional play structure, can't do. Nature play area, awesome, he gets to sit and look, that's what he does all the time. The ADA play structure, I'll just find, it was very offensive and hurtful as a mom and as somebody that's been working with special needs community for eighteen years now. The climbing structure, for those developing skills, some kids aren't going to develop skills. So to state that there's this play structure for those that are developing is like stating that, well, they're going to be developing. Some kids aren't going to. The only thing, the only thing for a child like Joey and kids and friends like him is a swing, is a swing that they can go back and forth. A lot of you may have children, a lot of you probably have children, and you get to sign them up for sports, Kids, Inc., all the cool things, 4-H, all the cool things. We don't have that opportunity here to sign Joey up for anything, anything. So for us to go anywhere, he gets to go see all of his siblings. He's a great cheerleader for all four of his siblings at all their sporting events, all their 4-H stuff. But when we made a commitment to adopt him, we made a commitment to make him a part of our family and a part of our community. And that means, if we come to a table, it's got to be a table that's available for everybody in our family, not just six of us.
The time, Ms. Strauss, thank you.
But for seven of us. So here's a great example of a swing that could easily, in my opinion, go to where the tire swing's going, so that all kids, even anybody, could sit in that swing, even an adult. So, we need to be better with our words when, I know you're, you guys are sticking to the, we have ADA equipment, yes, that means accessible, that means getting to it. We all know the legal terms of what accessible equipment is. I'm talking all abilities. For every child, every child deserves to go to a park with their family, the least they can do. They can't do it at school, they can't, it's shameful and disappointing that since 2015, your survey came back stating, the largest response was from your disability community. And you're still not listening, but now you want to say, oh, we'll put them over here. Because it just makes a lot of sense that we're going to go to this park to watch, and then we're going to pack up our friends in the community and go over. And there's no sidewalks. I know you all said there's the sidewalks, the accessible sidewalks, and all good, on the all-good side, there's no sidewalks over there. Could you carry it for me? Thanks. Talk to your families. Conversation.
Do we have anyone else in the audience that's going to testify tonight? Do we have anyone on the phone? If not, we'll close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. I have two items on the consent agenda, approval of the October 6th city council minutes and September 2025 financial report. Does anyone want to move anything off the consent agenda tonight?
Approve.
I have a motion from Counsel Shane to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Counsel Schilling, I think you beat Counsel Holsapple by a second there. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. No items removed from the consent agenda, report or comments from mayor and council members. Do we have any council members have reports tonight? They'd like to present. Counsel Briggs.
Just like to remind everybody to keep an eye out for your email. It's that time of year again for the city manager's performance evaluation and compensation review. So Counselor Shane and I are going to be discussing how we're going to format that. So look for an email on that, and we'll have more later.
Counsel Briggs, anyone else? If not, we'll move on to reports from the city manager and staff. Brian?
I think, Mayor Slack, so we have a few reports tonight. There's going to be an additional report. You all have the 11 by 17 sheet from me, we'll talk about that at the end. Our first one, though, is from the Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center and the Blue Dragons Swim Team, or maybe Blue Dolphins, I can't remember which one it is. It says Blue Dragons, but it's Blue Dolphins, right?
It's Blue Dolphins.
Yeah, yeah, come on up. Yes.
I'm Ann Heard, president of Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center. And I'm going to give a very short report, because then Paul Hegney, the Blue Dragon Swim Team coach, is going to give us kind of a summary of what's going on with the swim teams in the area. I just wanted to say that in the last year, the Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center has brought in $39,840, and every penny has gone to the pool. Some of it is still in waiting to pay for the lights. But, and the next thing we want to help with is re-taking all the old plastic off of the leisure pool, that includes the river, and putting new plaster, did I say plastic, putting new plaster on, so it'll be clean, and then replacing the fountain that the kids play with, and needs constant maintenance, with a child slide. And that will be, the city has budgeted $115,000 for that, but it'll cost $140,000. So we're hoping, with the amount we'll have left over after the lighting, plus the yearly renewal of all the banners, that we'll have enough to cover that $15,000. So we're excited about that. So, this is Paul Hegney, and he would like to tell you he needed this.
Yeah, I think I can talk loud enough.
Okay.
Yeah, so Hegney, Blue Dragons Swim Team, what's wrong with Blue Dolphins? There was a merge that went on and things like that. One of the things we wanted to also change to Dragons, as it does go with what the high school team and everything else with being the Dragons. We are a fully independent club from the pool. We rent it out and things like that, 501(c)(3). And over the last year, we've seen a growth within the team there. When we came over, about two going on three years and stuff like that, team was about 24 strong, about 18 regularly attending. Currently, we're at about 35 attending, 35 on roster and about 30 regularly attending. So the team has been growing, and with that, we've also had a growth of the outreach we've had. So we host two meets a year, one in October, one in April. And between those two meets over the last year, as we held one this last weekend, we've had about 60 families come in and buy hotel rooms and things like that there at the Best Western for that weekend. As we have been able to partner with the team down in Medford to come up here annually and things like that, as well as from Newport and other areas. They all, majority of the teams are at least 50, 40 to 50 miles away. So they're also having to get gas and be a part of it and everything. We have short meets, they're quick, so a lot of time we get out right around lunchtime. So families have found that they can hit, get a quick bite on their way back and things like that. So we've been able to do that. We want to continue to partner, work with everyone, see what we can do. As, we don't run the pool by any means, Jennifer and Gretchen, they're the ones that are really in charge of it. We are lucky and grateful for that space. But Ann just asked if we can come in and just kind of talk about how we've brought some people into the Dallas area and who love it. They've been able to go to the wineries for the ones that are staying here, they've been able to go around. The facility itself is a great facility, when you compare it with a lot around the state, being able to do that. HVAC and how hot it was this weekend becomes a little tough, but I know that's getting worked on, and will continue to get fixed. But they enjoy it, we have, there's a reason they're willing to drive three hours for a meet and things like that and be up here for the weekend, because they have fast swims in that pool, and it is. And so we'll continue to do that. But Ann, does somebody come on and talk about that, if we have any other questions or things?
I want you to mention the other swim teams that use the pool.
Oh, yeah, so not only do we use it year-round during the high school season, which this year will run from November 17th to, I think, February 21st or 20th, right around there. Both Dallas and Central High School utilize it, and they rent it out. Dallas' high school itself for swim, which traditionally was closer to 10 to 15 kids or less, da-da-da, jumped up to 25, almost 28 last year. And they're expecting to keep doing, keep doing that and staying strong, which is awesome. So they've needed more space, as well as Central, who also utilizes it and rents it out five days a week during that November to February time and things like that. And they have about, just under, right around 18 to 24 strong most of the time. So the pool's going to utilize year-round by us, but then during that winter season of OSAA, it's utilized by close to 50 high schoolers, as well as three meets throughout January. That brings in teams from Albany, Lebitten, Corvallis, and Silverton.
And there were, there were some improvements made to that scoreboard.
Correct, yeah. So all three teams went together, or, excuse me. All three teams plus the city of Dallas, the pool itself, was able to partner. We did update the scoreboard to have events and heats, so it's easier to track for everyone as they're going. Finished swimming, it runs somewhere to a track meet, where you have different heats, everyone's on at once, and sometimes it's a little harder to track, things are going on, a lot of things going. So we did get that update. It does need to continue to get fixed, as the wrong part was installed by the installer and things like that. So it didn't work this last weekend, but we're getting dectonics out here to continue to work on and fix it, to my understanding, and stuff. So that was great. And then also too, Dallas, they did a couple fundraisers, they did some stuff, where they got some new sound equipment that are able to use to be able to better project and kind of keep everyone informed about where the meet's at and have an announcer better use their voice, things like that.
Great. Any questions?
Counsel Shane.
He was first.
Oh, go ahead, Counsel Briggs.
Thank you for what you're doing. With the success and the growth of this program, are you, can you give us any feedback, what you're hearing from people who are traveling into Dallas, and you say that they're using the hotel rooms here? Are they adequate, or are they having to stay, or do you know if any people are having trouble finding hotels here in Dallas?
Yeah, so for the hotels and things like that, they, there are two big things. I talked to the coaches this last weekend. One, it is easy, they do like the Best Western being here and it's close, and it's not hard to get rooms. Second, next weekend, the Newport team is going over to Eugene, and their hotel costs are about $400 for that weekend, right? And it is getting harder and harder on pricing out some families. So the ability to come here, have a good pool, good-sized meet and things like that, they've liked affordability and the access to the hotels. At the Best Western, the main one I've heard, and stuff like that, so.
Counsel Shane.
I'm correct in thinking, this is about your team specifically, the Blue Dragons. I'm correct in thinking you're not formally connected with the school district, you're a standalone organization.
Correct.
That being the case, I'm curious, since your membership is large and growing, what's your geographic reach in terms of where you draw team members from? How widespread is the net?
Of course, yeah. So about a third of the team is within probably Dallas city limits proper. Another third, maybe a little bit more, is kind of more in the Mahomet Independence area. And we do have a good, another third that's out of West Salem that are traveling. We do have one single family who lives out in South Salem that travel in. We might have a second one as they came out today and things like that. We are attracting over a good number from West Salem into that. One, because of the other team that's in the Salem area. They transferred from being downtown at Willamette to out to South Salem. So there's a more convenient spot for them to come to, just being able to hop on over here. So it is about a third Dallas, third Central/Mahomet, or sorry, Independence/Mahomet, and then a third out in West Salem.
Cool.
Other questions? Ann, do you have anything else?
I just want to say, thank you. Just to say one more thing. Our last meeting in, well, the first part of this month, in October, we paid a little over $1,000 directly to the pool, and that was reimbursements for swim passes that had been redeemed that we've handed out. And we've handed out lots of swim passes, and a party package. We hand out four party packages a year that value $550 each, and then they auction them off, because they're all nonprofits, and hopefully they make, well, whatever they make, they get to keep. And then when it's redeemed at the pool, then we pay the pool the $550. So that's another way we get money into the pool, other than fixing things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. It's all very interesting. I learned a lot.
Mayor Slack, the next topic for the city manager's report is the Republic Services rates discussion. So if you recall, back in March of this year, the Public Administration Committee had met and requested some information from Republic Services regarding the rates, particularly how and what we can evaluate when we're determining rates as a city council within the ordinance of the city and the franchise company, Republic Services. And so we made that request to them, have followed up with them on a number of different occasions. We haven't yet received that information, and they acknowledged that when they sent us their information for how they're justifying a future rate increase for this coming year. So we have that information, I included that in the packet, not looking for a discussion tonight, really looking for a referral from the council to either one of our committees or maybe a future council work session, so we can discuss this information, as well as requesting and hopefully obtaining the information that we've already requested, couple that together to have a conversation regarding rates for Republic Services moving forward. So looking for a referral to either one of the committees or to a future council workshop, work session.
Counsel Schilling.
Personally, I would say that we table the whole thing until we receive the information from Republic Services that was requested.
I would second that. I would say we don't move forward until we receive what we've requested.
I don't even want to, I see no reason to even go to a committee or to a future meeting until they can come up with the information that was requested back in March.
Great.
Yeah, yeah, and that's great. So what I'll do is, I'll target the Public Administration Committee meeting in November. It gives us a month, and Republic Services has that time to be able to provide that information. If we don't receive the information by then, we'll move it to the Public Administration Committee meeting in January. All right, that sounds good.
Is it your sense, is it your sense that they're just short-staffed and behind the curve, or what?
Nope, no, I just think that they failed to get it to us. I requested it back in March on two different occasions, again in May on a couple different occasions, and then in September. Just never received any response.
So they're just dragging their feet for reason or reasons unknown?
Correct. Is there a specific contact there? Yeah, it's the contact we've had for years, Julie Jackson, and she's been responsive in the past, so I'm kind of surprised that we're not getting that response that we would normally get.
And one last comment. We were very much in good faith last year when we had already asked for the information, and we went ahead with reviewing the rate increase. But we said that we need this information, we still have not received it. And so if you would make sure we communicate that to her, that we did negotiate in good faith last year.
So that's all on that topic. The third topic is the one that we're adding to the agenda, and that is the basketball courts over in City Park. I'm going to invite our Public Works Director, Jennifer Ward, to come up and kind of walk us through this. I don't know if she'll have anyone else join her, but.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you for just a little bit of your time. I'll try to go through this as quickly and succinctly as I can. Many of you may recall that about a year or two ago, we brought before you a plan to build 10 new pickleball courts at City Park, at the entrance to City Park. And you approved that plan. We were looking at grant funding to offset the costs of a project that was coming in about 1.7 million. And we, the first grant that we went for, we did not receive. And so we are preparing, or could prepare, to go for a second, a different type of grant. That, the grant proposal for that is due November 17th. So that's part of the timeline that's driving this right now. We, so that was how we were planning to move forward with adding pickleball courts. However, one of our capital improvement projects for this year was to resurface the basketball courts that are there at the entry to City Park. And as we prepared to do that, and we're looking at that, kind of a light bulb went off, which was, this space could fit those 10 pickleball courts. And so Sports Services Supervisor Michael Pierce put together a plan, that's what you have, of what that might look like, and a cost estimate for putting pickleball courts where the basketball courts have been. And instead of building 10 new pickleball courts on the north side of Branfield, instead building two new basketball courts there. Switching the two has some cost savings, and also is something that we could undertake. We could construct, construct the basketball courts this fiscal year and likely the pickleball courts as well, or at least sometime this summer. If we went after the grant, which is a 50/50 grant, so if it was awarded to us, it would cover 50, it would be a reimbursement grant of up to 50% of the total cost. That is a federal grant that would require a little more hoop jumping through. And so I would not anticipate that we could begin construction of new pickleball courts until the summer of 2027. So we are just looking for some guidance from the council tonight, if, about whether to pursue this alternate path or not, or to even to look into it. If we did, we would want to engage the public in a robust way. And a path that that might look like was, is we would take it to the Parks Board this Wednesday night. We've pulled them together for a special meeting, they're available to do that if we decide to move forward. And with them, chart a path towards engaging the pickleball club, the basketball players, getting feedback from the public about this, this plan. And then bring it back to the Parks Board in December, looking for a recommendation from them to then bring it to you. If we pursue that path, we, of course, then miss the window for applying for the grant to help fund the original path. So kind of looking to you to help us decide, do we stick with the original plan and go for that grant? Or is this alternate path worth pursuing and engaging the public?
Counsel Fitzgerald.
Will you still apply for a grant for this path?
Likely we would not. We could, you'll see that the, the total cost of the alternate plan is about a third of the original plan. So even if we, so let's say we did with the original plan, even if we got a 50/50 grant for that, this still comes in, if we paid for this entirely, it is still less than the 50% that we would pay for the original plan.
I do have to say that I appreciate you bringing this alternative plan, because the other, the other plan was, it was a lot of money. I feel like this is huge savings and just a much better plan.
Counsel Holsapple.
So my concern with this, and I've voiced this before, is there's no facilities at this end of the park. If there's going to be any kind of use of 10 pickleball courts for any events or anything, people would have to walk all the way to the other end of the park to find any facilities in that. Is there any way we could add a facility, even if it's one or two restrooms for the, I mean, you've got 10 pickleball courts is my number-one concern. Number two, is it just pickleball, or are they going to be multi-use courts where you can extend them into tennis ball as, or tennis as well as pickleball, or just pickleball?
These will be just pickleball, part of this project, the original project. And this one would be to remove the pickleball striping from the tennis courts at Roger Jordan and restore those to full tennis court use. So you have tennis courts at Roger Jordan.
So you would take multi-use away from, rather than.
I think the feedback we've received when we've engaged both the tennis community and the pickleball community is that the additional lines, to be able to play both sports on the same court, sounds good in practice, or in theory, but in practice, it's really adds a lot of confusion, especially if you're learning either sport for the first time, like what line's in, what line's out. Also, the lines play differently with the balls. And so, you know, when you're hitting a ball and it hits a line that shouldn't be there. be there, the ball interacts differently than just if there wasn't a painted line there. So, both pickleballers and tennis players don't like having additional lines on their courts, and so, multi-use for those two sports don't really make sense.
I think, my input would, I would be more favorable towards one that has one or two fewer courts and facilities versus so many courts.
Sir Beriantos.
So, as I recall, last time we talked about this, we added additional $700,000 because we would have to retroactively dig up the old swimming pool and then take that out and do some construction, foundation work, or something like that?
Yes.
Okay, so what we're talking about is a savings of at least $700,000 plus. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Briggs.
To confirm, isn't it more like 1.2 million savings?
Oh, yes, it's more than, it's at least 700,000, but more, yes.
We did determine, I think a couple of meetings ago, that we have the funds available in our Parks SDCs for the pickleball courts, as it was budgeted originally, didn't we?
That is, that was true at the time. I would need to, I would need to, I would need to look at the budget again, given the purchase of the Fervilla property currently.
Some discussion that the purchase of that facility on Fervilla was approved pending that we had contingency funds left to build the pickleball courts. We had that discussion.
We had that discussion related to if we received the grant funding as well. So, to pay for, and correct me if I'm wrong on how you're thinking about this, Jennifer, but I think we looked at that and said, you know, if we received the grant, you have the funds to be able to do the pickleball and some additional park projects that we had laid out, John Barnard Park and whatnot. So, yes, so there should be funding available if you went the route of the first alternative, not this one that we're showing you, and received the grant.
So looping that back full circle, then, the 501 should be more than covered by the funds we currently have in the SDCs?
Correct.
Correct, correct.
Second follow-up is, the pickleball courts that are on Lockry Hall, do they have facilities?
They, the pickleball club has brought in an outhouse there.
Do we know if any of the pickleballers use the Aquatic Center? Can we, any idea with that, or?
Yes, they do, especially if they're using the tennis courts for pickleball, then they will come use the Aquatic Center first.
Counsel Beriantos.
Going back to the brand-new basketball court and the retroactive filling in with the swimming pool, now, does anything have to be done to put a basketball court on top of that?
The way that the basketball court can be configured on the site, it would not overlap the pool at all, so we would not have to deal with the pool at all.
Sir Schilling.
Since I am very familiar with pickleball courts and pickleball tournaments, every time that there's a tournament, and there are eight courts that are used in the tennis court during a tournament, and they bring in outhouses for those porta-potties, and it serves them very well. If we were to add two bathrooms, a two restroom stall, very small, I would guess we'd be in the $150,000 range, just to add them. That would be just my ballpark from construction experience and what Public Works would cost in a government facility. So you'd be looking at a huge decrease, not just one or two courts, you're looking probably shrinking three, four courts at least. We can get by with the, at a different time, maybe we could add facilities. I don't think that we would want to look at it that way. I mean, this is the communication with the pickleball club, and I know that they do utilize the porta-potties very well. I mean, I see them in there all the time. I don't see them crossing that often over to the ones across from the Aquatic Center. I don't see them using the Aquatic Center that often.
I would just add a little bit to that. So right now, our restrooms are actually closed in the wintertime in this park, so we don't have, you know, like stick-built or permanent restrooms that are available in the wintertime. We also, because the park closes at nighttime, we lock all bathrooms at dusk, or at least in the nighttime. But I think that Counsel Schilling is bringing up a great point, which is, you know, in the short term, you could certainly utilize, you know, porta-potties or honey buckets in this location for events. You would definitely bring in those, even if you had, you know, two or three stalls available on a permanent basis. I do think that in the future, you could add restroom facilities. I would add them on the north side of Branhold Drive by the basketball courts. You're able to get out of the floodplain up there and not have that impact. I think the pickleball courts are being placed on top of existing asphalt, so a lot of the work and construction costs are already covered. We just relayed all the asphalt there for the basketball courts. So you're not, you would, in order to achieve savings, you would actually eliminate one of the basketball courts, because that work's not yet been done, in order to save money to put towards a restroom.
So, is the plan here to have this as a one-step phase, or a phased-in? Since the surfacing has been done, we could just stripe the pickleball courts and that would be done, and then we'd add the basketball courts as phase two?
A little bit more that needs to be done in order for the pickleball courts to be built. You just have the foundations done, right? So you've laid, you know, the rock base is already there, the asphalt's now there, there's a coating that goes on top for, you know, the courts themselves, then the lines, there's some fencing, some benches, other improvements you want to do, some fencing that goes around it. So there's more yet to be done. All this work would be done, you know, within this next calendar year. So it's one phase to get all of it done, both pickleball and basketball courts. I would see us then looking, you know, down the road, you know, year two, year three, or further, for the installation of a restroom, a permanent restroom facility. You're pointing out a great point, which is, there is not restroom facilities on this side of the park, and I think that that would be justified in the future. Those would be an SDC-eligible expense as well, so.
I just know from my experience that the basketball court area is regularly used and a big part of the community, as well as the pickleball courts are. So, and we do have two other pickleball facilities.
Which is why I think we really want to have that public engagement process to, you know, so you have some understanding of what the community is looking for and is adequate.
If I could just clarify a little bit on construction timeline. So, the cement for the basketball courts, that's work that can be done during the winter. The acrylic that we would need to put on top of the pickleball courts, we would have to wait for warmer weather for.
Sir Shane.
Yeah, a couple of things. Back on restrooms again, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but if memory serves, the last time we built a brand-new restroom was the one in the Lyle Sports Complex, and that was quite a few years ago. Does anybody happen to remember what we paid, what we cost, what the cost was for building that one? Because I don't. Just thought I'd ask.
I don't know what it cost, but I know, being involved in the softball program and when there were tournaments down there, that was greatly needed, because the porta-potties was not sufficient with the amount of people that came down for those tournaments.
I do remember, and I wasn't on the council then, but there was a lot of discussion about that one, yeah. Yeah. Second, do I understand that the resurfacing of the basketball courts is already complete? It's been done? Okay, well, that wipes out one question I was going to ask. So that just leaves one. This proposal versus the original, at 1.7-some million, then this proposal comes in at less than a third of that. That's an enormous delta, and we've touched around some aspects of it, but could you drill down in a little more detail and tell us why that delta is what it is?
I would say the two, the two big differences are, one, the pool, and, two, the other one, the original one included parking on the north side of Branhold, and so there is considerable roadwork to do with that. I would say those were the two main contributors to the cost.
Well, that leads to a follow-up, which is, I see there's a little bit of parking planned on the north side. Is that part of this proposal?
Correct.
And I take it for granted, then, that that, combined with the existing parking on the other side of the street, is anticipated to be sufficient for most uses?
So there's the parking on both sides of Branhold, and also on the street parking on Levens.
Counsel Briggs.
There's $110,000 budgeted for the shelter. What does that consist of?
So the shelters would be, a little hard to demonstrate on this. If you look at the pickleball courts, there's kind of little marks between the north ones and the south ones. Those are benches. So we want to put shelters over those benches there.
Stop.
Exactly.
There's five of them?
There are five benches. We've looked at some different designs for those shelters. It could be individual shelters over each bench, or maybe something longer, or a combination of the two.
And not the old porch, or?
No, no.
So just from a process standpoint, since this item was not on the agenda, we're not looking for an official action tonight, since you can't do that according to your rules. But we're just looking for kind of some head nods from the council. Do you want us to pursue this alternative B, take it to the Parks Advisory Board, do a public engagement process, and then bring back the results of that to you, or would you rather that we drop this item, move forward with the grant? So let's, option A, head nods?
Option A, yes.
Okay, option B, anyone? Alright, that gives us enough. That gives us enough. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any more reports from the City Manager staff tonight? Alright, we'll go in, head and go to first reading of ordinance, ordinance number 1917.
Mayor, ordinance 1917 is an ordinance adding sections 2.610 to 2.630 to the Dallas Municipal Code establishing the responsibilities of the Historic Preservation Commission. So, if you'll recall, you just adopted ordinance, I believe it was 1914 or 1915, which added and replaced the Historic Preservation Regulations in the Dallas Development Code. As part of that, we took out the commission's responsibilities and were moving those over to the municipal code. Every other board and commission and committee of the City of Dallas Advisory has their formation and duties and responsibilities in the municipal code, so we're just aligning this with all the other boards and commissions that you have.
Any discussion? Counsel Briggs.
Was there any discussion as to whether these five members needed to live in the city limits or Polk County? I don't recall.
So, that's included in here. I think if you look under the membership, it talks about that. So it's at the bottom of number two. It says, the mayor subject, so it's on page 44 of your packet. Number two says, the mayor's subject to the council approval shall appoint a Historic Preservation Commission here and after referred to as the Commission, consisting of five members with a demonstrated positive interest in and knowledge of work competence in historic preservation. All reasonable efforts must be made to appoint those professional, with professional experience in the fields of preservation, architecture, archaeology, community history, building trades, real estate, or related specialties. At least three of the members must reside within the Dallas urban growth boundary.
Discussion, questions? If not, I'll declare ordinance 1915?
17.
1917 to pass its first reading. Next, we have a second reading of ordinance, ordinance number 1916.
Mayor, ordinance 1916 is an ordinance amending Dallas Municipal Code section 2.905 to increase the number of members to maintain a quorum for the Economic Development Commission. Just a reminder for the council, this is the correction to make sure, since we changed the number of commissioners from seven to eight, we also have to change the quorum from four to five. So that's all that this does.
Discussion? If not, I'll ask the city recorder to call, roll call vote.
Counsel Schilling.
Yes.
Counsel Shane.
Yes.
Counsel Spivey.
Yes.
Counsel President Briggs.
Yes.
Counsel Beriantos.
Yes.
Counsel Blaser.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Hozapple.
Yes.
Counsel Jants.
Yes.
Nine to zero.
Passes nine to zero. Alright, is there any other business to come before the council tonight? Reminder, we're going right into the Urban Renewal Agency Board Directors' meeting after this, so. Did you have something, Counsel Jants?
Yeah, I was just going to ask. We did, we voted on that swing project last meeting. We are moving forward with that, correct?
Correct.
Like, okay.
Accessible swings in the city park? Yeah, correct. That's been added to the capital improvement plan and will be constructed within the next calendar year.
Just because I don't know, I'm assuming that there's a lot of regulations to just put a swing into, or like at risk to just put a, if the community would, you know, take the risk to have, just have one of those swings put in at any other place, you have to have, there's a lot of regulations that go along with that?
Yeah, with any swing set, you know, there's design standards that go around the placement, right? Because you have to make sure that there's safety components. You know, you don't want the swings too close to other play equipment, right? Where kids might be going on their paths to travel, so that you don't have, you know, the interactions of people on swings hitting people that aren't on the swings. So there's design and placement of all the facilities, whether it's a swing set, or a play structure, or a slide. And so you need to, you know, think about how that works, and so that's all engineered. For, you know, an accessible swing set or an accessible play structure, you also have hard surfacing that not only gets them to the equipment, but the equipment itself, you know, has accessibility design elements incorporated into that, again, meeting standards. So, you know, with the accessible play, or the accessible swing set that we're looking at installing at the city park, all those things are taken into consideration, right? The location, the placement of that particular facility next to other, you know, play equipment, making sure the spacing is adequate, you know, it's all engineered and designed. So, yes, so all that's taken into consideration when we're locating those facilities in our parks.
Go ahead, Counsel Briggs.
In addition to tonight's testimony, I've been contacted personally by two other family members that are really disappointed that we're not putting a swing at the John Barnard Park, just for, just for the record. And I know, we had some discussion about it, and I know that it's a huge expense. I don't know why we really landed on putting it down at the city park when John Barnard is all accessible, and I don't know if it's too late to reopen up discussion and discuss that further, but there is some community pushback that's fairly strong.
Yeah, so I'll talk about that, because we've received testimony now twice from Ms. Strauss, and, you know, we hear from people in the community as well. So, the, I'll answer your last question first. Yes, it's too late. The park is being built. It's under contract with design. All the elements, like I mentioned, were strategically placed and located so that you could get as much into that park as possible. I'll also state that John Barnard Park was never supposed to be built entirely for all, it's not an all-abilities park for every aspect of that park. We received a $45,000 grant from Moda Health that was to include accessible equipment at the park, which we're doing. We're also spending more than a million dollars plus to put the rest of the park together. That includes a pollinator garden, it includes other play equipment, it includes a basketball court. So there's a lot of, a lot of different amenities that serve, you know, all the, you know, all different aspects and people in our community, people with abilities and people with limited abilities. And so, I just want to make that clear. And then we went through a design process, engaged the community in several different meetings. Through that, there was a whole list of amenities that were included in that park that was kind of a wish list, right? What do you want to see in this park? And we had all sorts of things to choose from. That then went to internal, you know, within the city, staff and our consultant team. We had a landscape architect that was on the project, and they made choices, working off that list of amenities. Included was an accessible swing set. That amenity was not included in the final design that then went to the Parks Advisory Board and to the city council for approval. So, yes, acknowledging Ms. Strauss's comments and people from the community, a swing set, an accessible swing set was talked about, and from the beginning, as were a lot of other amenities. Not every amenity made the list, including the accessible swing set. And there was reasons for that. And so, moving to today, I would say that that park was designed, it was approved, and it's being built. We received additional feedback saying, hey, we're really wanting the accessible swing set, didn't fit in John Barnard Park with what was approved. So we had further conversations with the Parks Advisory Board and the community, and landed on placing that swing set in the city park. It's going to be fully accessible, a swing set made for people with all abilities that will be able to use that, and I think that's something the city should be proud of. And, you know, we're now adding those additional amenities, right, that we talked about tonight, have the amenities, you know, in the city. It doesn't have to be in John Barnard Park. We're going to have, we're going to have some accessible play equipment there. We're going to have some accessible play equipment now in city park. And we're going to continue to look at opportunities to place more accessible equipment in our other city parks. We continue to replace equipment or add new equipment where it's able.
If I heard you correctly, that there was discussion, and the size, the footings, the foundation, just wouldn't fit at John Barnard Park? Is that kind of what I'm gathering?
With the selection of all the different amenities that are in the park, that was one of the things that didn't make the list. Correct.
Counsel Shane.
Yeah, I understand how we got to where we are, and that's water under the bridge. And what we're doing is good stuff. But we just acquired some land which will roughly double the size of John Barnard Park going down the road. And going down the road, before we put together a plan to do any major development work on that new plot of land, I would want to see swing sets included at that time in, in the next round of development that we go through.
Any other discussion? Any other business for the council? All right, I'll adjourn the city council meeting at 7:50 and open the Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors meeting at 7:50? Did I say 7:30? It's 7:50. I was trying to rush it a bit. 7:50?
He said 50.
All right. And I'll ask the city recorder to call the roll, or do you want to use the same roll call? All right. I need, first thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the July 7th Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors meeting. Do I have a motion?
So move, move to approve.
Moved by Counsel Shane, seconded by Counsel Schilling. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hear none, passes unanimously. Next on the list is a building improvement grant for 217 Southwest Court Street. Do you have some information on that, Brian?
I do, so I'll invite our economic development specialist, Tyler Ferrari, to come up and address the agency on this topic.
Thank you, Brian, and good evening, everyone. I am coming back to you tonight to discuss an approval of a building improvement grant that you received during this latest round of grant applications. And as you can see in your staff report, the application is for 217 Southwest Court Street, currently the Apostolic Faith Church. The applicant, Hundred Acre Academy, is interested in making some necessary ADA improvements to the stairwell there as part of a larger project to convert the church into additional classroom space for the school. The total project cost for this portion of the project's going to be $28,500, and they've requested $14,250 in the additional attachments here as part of the application. You'll see that the applicant initially requested $25,000 for the project. That was a misunderstanding on the applicant's part. We reached out to them and explained our matching process, that's a 50/50 match. So for their total project cost, they'd be eligible for $14,250, and they still wanted to move forward with the application there. Some additional notes is that this application did meet our minimum scoring requirement that we've implemented this year for this round of building improvement grants. And additionally, it brought up to us that there is currently a deficiency in our scoring and that we don't specifically call out ADA improvements as an eligible criteria to receive for points. So we're bringing that up to you all as just a thing to be aware of that we'll look, that we are looking at fixing for next year's grant cycle, especially in a lot of our historic buildings. That's a common issue that a lot of our building owners and businesses are dealing with. And so we want to make sure that those projects are specifically called out and eligible in our grant program. This project is pretty cut and dry. It will improve ADA accessibility for the building as part of this larger project. And we are proposing that the council approve the application at its fully requested amount. If the agency opts to do that tonight, about $10,750 will remain in this year's building improvement grant funds. And so we anticipate opening up a third and likely final application window at the beginning of December. That way, building owners can have the winter time to evaluate, determine if they have any projects, apply, and then we'd have those likely approved in time for the spring building season. And you'll note here, any potential grant agreement with this applicant will have the following conditions before funds can be dispersed, is that the applicant must obtain any necessary land use approvals required for occupying the building, and the applicant must obtain all necessary building permits, and the inspections must be completed. So that brings me to the end of my staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Shane?
Yeah, the, the improvements contemplated by this proposal, the internal, external, or both?
They're primarily internal.
You said primarily, meaning not entirely?
Not entirely. So depending on how you define external, the door on the exterior.
It's able from the outside.
Yeah, so the door, the door will be the really main external improvement, but the bulk of it will be the stairwell.
Counsel Berriantos?
Yes, I saw on the last couple of pages, the, the scoring application, but can you explain the scoring criteria and how you rounded up to how you came on an average of 50?
So, so earlier this year, when we brought the new building improvement grant guidelines to the agency, there was discussion by the body of what was an appropriate minimum score. And so initially, what we had recommended at the staff level was a minimum score of 100. And we received feedback from the agency that that might be too high. And so we went back, did some further research, and we confirmed that previous grant applications that we viewed as competitive and they were good projects wouldn't necessarily have scored that high. So we lowered the amount to 50 to, to make it so that most common applications that we've received over the past two grant cycles would still be applicable projects. So that's why we determined that 50, number of 50.
My question is, how did you get to 50? What criteria did you use? How is, what was the format that was used?
I'm not quite sure I'm understanding the question.
Well, I guess I'm looking at these numbers that are at the end. Does that correlate to the 50?
Yes, it does.
Or is that something else?
No, it does. So let me pull that up. So, so the score that you see in the table there is an average score. So we had staff as well as members of the Urban Renewal Advisory Council score the applications. And so that 55 is a average of all of those scores. So generally, where those, where those points primarily came from was for building improvements where they can receive the maximum of 50 points. And so I believe the majority of them scored, got, received 25 points for a project that repairs or improves the interior of a building that's in poor structural condition. And then there were additional points awarded for, I'm looking for it here, project improves a space for a business relocating within downtown, those were likely where some points were awarded. They received additional, additional points for their project value, and they also received points for the matching funds that they're providing. And then finally, on the, under the supplemental points is where they were able to earn some additional points by including a site plan or architectural drawing completed by a professional firm, which is included in the application. So generally, that's how they got to that average of 55 points.
Hey, I'm not a big math major or anything, but I was just able to kind of add up all the points, divide it by five, and you're well within where you want to be. You're at about 74, which is higher than 50. But I was, in my head, I just wanted to have it explained to actually make sense where the 50 came from. But again, as I add them all up, all five categories, divided by five, and you're at 74, so.
So the, the appendix A, Carlos, that you're looking at, that's possible points, right? So this is not the, this is not the scoring rubric for the actual application. That was not included in this information that you have. So this is just saying, you know, the application was scored against these criteria, and these are the maximum amount of points that they could have received had they, you know, with the, with the scoring. So the actual scoring for this application's not included in the packet of information you have, but the scoring that they received was 55 points, you said?
That was the, that was the average of the four scores that we received.
Yeah, so there were four people that scored and ranked the application using these criteria, right, on this table that you're referencing. So the average of the four evaluators was 55 points, which is above the minimum 50 that's required. So of the 150 total possible maximum points that they could get on this table, this application scored just above the minimum in order to receive a grant, which is 50. They scored 55 on average between the four evaluators. But the actual evaluations are not included in the information you have.
Maybe you would want, you know, in a future time, you want to add that on there so it's transparent how you got to that number.
Yeah, that's a great comment, and we'll make sure we include that with future applications from the agency.
Go to Counsel Briggs, and then I'll.
Are you saying include their score, is what you're saying?
We can include the actual scoring that, that took place so that you can see how each application was ranked by the individual scores.
I'd really like to see it now rather than later because we vote on these funds based on what the business is going to be bringing to the community, whether it's a restaurant or retail or, you know, bank business. We kind of scored accordingly, so, you know, we don't even know what we're approving here.
Yeah, that's completely fine. I would, if you want to evaluate that information before making a decision, I would just table this item until we have the next agency meeting, which we can have November 3rd.
I think that is a great point. That's the point that I really, the overall point that I wanted to make was, how do we know this number and where, where do we come upon this number? Because to me, it could be pulled from the air and it, nothing shows me how this number was correlating.
I agree with both of you. I'd like to see the detail.
Counsel Holsapple?
So my question is about the ADA accessibility improvements for the staircase. Is the staircase currently super steep, and we're going to increase the size of the stairs? What do we mean by ADA accessibility improvements? That stairwells was the issue at the beginning.
So generally with, with these types of projects, the building department has, I believe it's a 25% total project cost for when it comes to ADA improvements. So these improvements aren't going to solve the full ADA, necessary.
I guess my question is, what is it going to improve? If you're going to take one stairwell out, put another one in, how does that improve ADA accessibility? Or is it the doorway that's improving the ADA accessibility?
So it's, so for this project, it's primarily the doorway. So currently, the doorway is not at grade with the parking lot, and so this will bring the doorway to at grade, which will, which is unfortunately expensive. But with how, with how we calculate ADA accessibility with these, with projects like this, 25% of the total project cost. And so we're looking at the whole project that they're presenting to us.
It just seems misleading here on page five, where it says, "The project will make ADA accessibility changes to the stairs of the building." That's not really the ADA accessible improvement, though. It's the door. Correct?
Yes, I mean, what the ADA accessibility is for to, is for the public to be able to gain access to the building, which is impossible currently. So they'd be able to, with this project, gain access to the building through the door because of the ADA changes. And then this, and then they'd be able to reach the stairs. And again, the full scope of ADA accessibility isn't necessarily 100% of ADA accessibility, but how we determine that when providing a building permit is typically 25% of the work being ADA accessible. Work will often meet that threshold.
That's a good question, Director Holsapple. So what we'll do is, since we're going to come back to this topic, it sounds like anyway, we'll also evaluate all the, all the improvements that are, are improving ADA accessibility within the building, besides just the door. If there's other things, like, you know, how are the stairs improving, you know, getting closer to ADA accessibility, meeting that requirement, we'll, we'll evaluate all the improvements and bring that answer back.
Counsel Shane?
While we're on the subject of doorways, I have a, I have friends who spend all, most of their time in wheelchairs, and they are forever grousing about the width of doorways being too narrow, you know, fine for a person on foot, but, but difficult or impossible for someone in a chair. Since I'm not familiar with the, the details of the ADA regulations, is that one of the ones, one of the things that are evaluated in terms of ADA accessibility doorway width?
I don't know off the top of my head, unfortunately.
I'll answer that question at the next meeting.
Is the consensus to table us till another meeting? That's what I'm gathering.
If there, if there are additional questions that you have right now that we can bring back at the next meeting, we'll certainly do that.
Additional questions for Brian?
Definitely a good one about the doorways.
And the point system.
Just to be clear, dude, what we decide here was one of the things we decided here that with futures, future project submissions, we want to see the detailed breakdown of how they were scored. That was what I took away from this, just making sure.
Yes, so we will do that for any future application. We'll also do it with this application. So we're not going to make a decision on this tonight. We'll come back with the scoring of the four people that scored this application. We'll also bring back the questions to Counsel Holsapples, your question, and anything else anyone wants to bring up tonight.
Just wanted to be sure we were on the same wavelength.
Brian, do you have anything else before we go to executive session?
Not on this topic.
Not on this topic? Thank you, Tyler.
Want me to read this? I'll, I'll go ahead and read it. Ready to go to an executive session? All right, the Dallas Development Commission and Urban Renewal Agency will now meet an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property transactions. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602E, which allows the agency to meet an executive session to deliberate with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive sessions. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general.
We'll reconvene the meeting of the Urban Renewal District Agency? Is there any, any other discussion? Sing none, the meeting is adjourned at 9:05.